For this Tuesday, May the 24th, we welcome you to our meeting. And first of all, D, let's take a roll.
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, we have a number of them. And I also want to thank Matt Young, who's our communications coordinator, who reached out to the different departments and got some impact and some comments back. So the city's street lines are getting a fresh coat of paint starting today. So please be aware of posted signage and cones out there for the wet paint. And please do not cross freshly painted lines because your tires will show it. I just want to make sure you know that. But also, it will show on the pavement. So just try and be careful on that. And do not pass paint operators. That's from our Maintenance and Operations Department. From Transit, the Transit Career Fair is happening Saturday, June 4th, at the Transit Building at 775 Northwest Guy Street from 1:00 to 5:00 o'clock. Visitors can tour the facilities and vehicles, engage with the current Transit team members, learn about pay and benefits. Interviews will be held the following week, but candidates can use a kiosk to apply online right at the fair. So right now, they're looking for bus operators, bus washers, and dispatchers, all at our Transit Department. From Parks and Recreation, scheduled opening of the Rainy Pool will be on June 11th, right at 1:00, coincide with second Saturdays, the first of three such events this summer, which welcomes all Rainy Park for competitive games, food trucks, music, and casual fun from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. Rainy Park Pool discounted summer passes can be purchased through May 31st. You can call the Parks and Recreation Department or check us out online. From Public Works, the construction for the two roundabouts. It happens to be a major discussion around town right now. So one's the Albion Drive at SR 27, the other Terraview in North Fairway continues. You want to see updates on that? Aside from just driving there and seeing all the people working, you can just check us out on the City of Pullman Facebook or Twitter. From Community Development, there's a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 25th. That's tomorrow, 7:00 here at City Home. Meeting will include a public hearing to address a proposed 1.1 acre zone change along Southwest Center Street. Most city operations will be closed in the observance of Memorial Day. On Monday, May 30th, Boy Scouts will be placing crosses at the cemetery. On Friday, the 27th, on Saturday, the 28th, the American Legion and other volunteers will be meeting at the cemetery to place American flags. More flags will be displayed downtown and on Bishop Boulevard, all courtesy of our veterans and courtesy of the American Legion, the Pullman contingent. Also want to thank our School Resources Officer, Scott Patrick, for doing another outstanding job in teaching dare to our fifth graders. Last night, I see Bob Maxwell here from our school superintendent. Bob and I and a long number of others were there to see the graduation for the fifth grade. And again, I want to compliment Scott Patrick for the excellent job he does as our School Resources Officer for the community. With that, we now move to item number C, the confirmation of appointments. Our first appointment that I am recommending to the council is the confirmation of Lorena O'English to the Planning Commission for term expiring on December 31st of 2027. And I'm going to lean over to Becky because Becky helped recruit Lorena.
Thank you.
And entertain a motion.
Yes, I move that we confirm the appointment of Lorena O'English to the Planning Commission.
Do I hear a second? Got a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the next motion that I'm asking for, a confirmation of appointment for David Scott McBee to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, I would entertain a motion on that.
Move to confirm the appointment of David Scott McBee to Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for that. And now we move on to the presentations. We have three of them here tonight. Our first one is the Neil Public Library Annual Report and our library director Joanna Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me just get this queued up. Well, let me start by saying that 2021 was a much better year than 2020. So we're already starting off better. Neil Public Library's recovery continued throughout the year in accordance with state and local guidelines. Returning staff were trained as greeters, and you see one of them right here on the slide. They were, we used our greeters to monitor indoor capacity limits and also to enforce health and safety requirements. The library reached a significant milestone on July 6th, when staffing levels had fully recovered and indoor service without time limits was fully restored. And there you see the photo of the sign trumpeting that significant milestone. Budget conditions also improved. The library phased in increased use of its operating budget to once again fund programs and materials. Supplemental funding from the Friends of Neil Public Library in the amount of $157,000 continued to fill important gaps, including a community grant from Meter Foundation for $8,250 for Grab and Go bags and from the Lewis Clark Valley Healthcare Foundation to support the mobile hotspot pilot lending program. And I want to give a shout out to Councilmember McCall. I was not aware of that grant program, so thank you very much for letting me know. I passed that along to the Friends. And the result for our community is that we have mobile hotspots. So thank you. So this slide shows the change in cardholders, new cardholders to the library. And in 2021, we had over 18,000 cardholders in total, which is an increase of 6.8% over 2020. The dotted red, oh, and then the resident cardholders, which you see in the red column there, we had an increase of 8.3% over 2020. And residents account for 87.6% of our total cardholders. The dotted red line you see on this chart is a trend line. It shows a very nice upward trend that we all like to see, where cardholders and the number of resident, resident cardholders are increasing. And one thing to point out, as you look at the red column and the blue column over the years, you see that the number of residents is growing and that gap is closing. So in a perfect world, all residents would be cardholders. Our next chart here shows annual visits and circulation activity. So the blue column is the circulation. This is the checking out of library materials. And the red line shows our visits. And of course, in 2020, that dramatic tanking of use is from the pandemic. But as you see in 2021, we're starting to climb back upward again. So on November 2nd, surrounded by family and friends, Matthew Root held a dedication service for the Sarah M. Moore Memorial River Nook Deck by the library. The goal of this project was to utilize an existing natural space by the library to create outdoor seating and a relaxation spot for the community to gather before and after their visit. This project was fully funded in Sarah's memory by Matthew Root and family and friends. So I talked a little bit just a minute ago about our mobile hotspot loan program. The library launched this program with funding from grants in the Friends of Neil Public Library to address resource inequities by expanding internet access to residents. The mobile hotspots were used to conduct telehealth sessions, stay informed of changes in the pandemic changes, health information, access food support resources, attend remote classes, and seek employment. I can't say it better than users say it themselves. So here are some quotes. "I have not had internet at home for three years. I used to sit inside the library to do computer work, but with the pandemic, I had to sit outside in the cold a few times a week. Thanks to the hotspots, I no longer have to sit outside." "We used our phones and your internet to apply for new jobs and feed our family from food banks. So it's not enough to know that food is out there. You have to know where to go to get the food." And the last one, "My child was suffering from depression with not being able to leave the house and play with friends. Having books to read and your internet access allowed him to keep his mind engaged and not harm himself." So our virtual adult programs, all adult programs happened virtually. There were two in 2021. Our Everybody Reads is a common reading program. We met with author Matthew Sullivan. It was a fantastic book, had a, it was one of those mystery books. And what was great is at the very end, it pulled a twister on you and nobody saw it coming. So we had a great time with Matthew. And he actually was good enough to do not just an author talk, but also writing workshops for teens. So this was, this was a great program. We had 92 participants. And then we have our Grand Avenue Book Club. And every month, community gets together, they read a common book, they come together and they talk about it. So we had 93 participants in the year. There may be some familiar faces that you see on this slide if you look particularly to my far right here. We had guest readers as a highlight of this, of last year's summer reading program. I want to thank, thank the Friends of Neil Public Library, Serenity Ridge Farms, Phoenix Conservancy, the Pullman Fire Department, Whitman County Humane Society, Pullman City Council, Pullman Food Pantry, our library board of trustees, the Whitman County Historical Society, the Pullman Police Department, Pullman Human Resources, and of course, Mayor Glenn Johnson. So reaching out into the community, we were really, oh, I'd say pleasantly surprised. Actually, we were kind of floored by the amazing response that we had when we put it out there and said, hey, would anybody be interested in being a guest reader? And the emails just came flooding in. So thank you so much for everybody who is a guest reader for last year's summer reading program. It was wonderful to get outside of the library, to spotlight the talent in our community and to show different slices of our community as well. So we had 44 programs and we had 1,274 views from our guest readers. So we also continued our portable approach to programming last year. We had baby bags, Storytime bags, Grab and Go Steam bags, Grab and Go Teen bags, Grab and Go Family bags, and an art activity bag created by the Pullman Art Car. In this, in the lower portion of the slide, you can see our community partners. I want to also add a note of gratitude to the Pullman Kewanis. They donated $600 to the Friends of Neil Public Library to support youth literacy. Some of those dollars were used to support Grab and Go Bags. So thank you, Pullman Kewanis. We really truly could not do this caliber of a programming without community support. Okay, let's change gears a little bit and talk about organizational capacity. So the library is always looking for ways to improve. And that is improving service to our community. And that is also improving our service to each other, our staff, investing in our people, investing in our staff. Staff development was a primary focus in 2021. These efforts were led by Resina Emmons, Minna Lon, and Ashley Byers. On December 16th, the library converted its time slip circulation position into a time slip reference position. And we did that to increase organizational capacity and deliver more public service improvements. So the impact of this change had both an external and an internal effect. Externally facing, it was a public service improvement because any and every staff is able to equally help any patron who comes to the service desk. So there is not a siloed approach to service. You come up to the desk, our staff are now fully trained to the same level and anybody can help you. So this reduces wait time. Internally facing, the improvement was it created a stronger and more cohesive team. One team, one service, fully trained. The staff comments from this, they said, thank you for investing in us. Thank you for believing we can. Thank you for, for, for taking a chance on us and giving us the training. And they really have risen to the occasion. You know, we ask a lot of them in our public service. And they have risen to that occasion and they are, it's, it's so heartening to see them so competently able to fulfill those duties. So another, 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 what would I say? Method of organizational capacity actually came through a project that our circulation team did. They embarked on a process improvement project that began in October. And you can see on the slide that our problem statement is that since July 2021, the front desk wait times for patrons had increased. So our objective in this project was to reduce patron wait times by 10%. And our timeline was that we were going to collect data in October. We were going to brainstorm improvements, create and rank those improvements. And then between November and March, we were going to trial those and see which ones actually were improvements and which ones actually, through additional data collection, that data was going to verify whether this was an improvement or not. So this first chart here actually shows what kinds of transactions happen at the front desk. So we had to, we wanted to collect the data to understand what kinds of transactions and then the frequency that those transactions occurred. What we found out is that most of the transactions at the front desk pertain to borrower records, something that a patron wants to have done. Either they want a book renewed, they need to update their address. It has something to do with their patron borrowing record. Which, by the way, is a change from previous years. In previous years, a lot of our questions pertained to deep research questions. I need help with this, can you help me find that? And it was, it was very deep research. Nowadays, it's really more patron record and patron borrowing. This next chart shows how long, currently, or current state at the project, how long are people actually waiting in line? Well, the average wait time was a minute and 11 seconds. And as we charted that data, we saw that something was happening between 2:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. So you can see on that chart, and that's in the second, second chart below that, 2:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., that's above the red line. The red line indicates the average wait time. So what's going on with that? As we, as we dug into what could be happening, the Pareto charts on the, on the, on the right-hand side there show how many times patron, staff have to weave around clutter behind the desk to get to the desk to help. So what we can see is that between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., staff are frequently weaving around the carts in the workspace or they're having them push the carts out of their way to get to the front desk. Okay, so the improvements. Well, first, we decluttered the workspace. In, in one of the first slides I showed, there was a whole lot of carts behind, behind the desk there. And now, as you look at that picture, we have a clean aisle of work. So when somebody needs help, staff come right up. They're right there at the desk and they're not having to push anything out of their way or weave around anything to get to the patron to serve. We lowered the height of our youth catalog station. Kind of an obvious change, right? But we, it actually took methodical study to come up with this. And then we had to see, well, let's lower it, let's see what happens. What happened was that, as you can see in the picture, youth helps themselves. They were able to independently use the library. That meant that they were not engaging staff to get that help that they could do for themselves. And that allowed staff to stay in place to help more patrons. We also adjusted the Plexiglas barriers for better acoustics. And we redeployed one employee from behind the desk out to the floor when the classes came. Because what we found out was that between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., that's when our classes visit the library. So when all, when your staff to help individual patrons and all of a sudden, you have 30 kids that come down to the library, it's going to vary the process. You're going to have some delays. You're going to need to be deployed in different ways to help that class and support that class. And so by redeploying one employee out to the floor, they were able to work with the class, anticipate those questions, help them find things so that by the time the, the students got to the, the service desk, they were ready to go and patron, and staff were able to help them. Now, those changes cost less than $100. So what else, what other impacts are there? If you remember, when we started this project, we had a minute and 11 wait seconds for patrons. We were able, by investing in less than $100 and going through this, this process, we were able to actually make improvements and decrease the average wait times by 73%. Dropping our average wait time down to 19 seconds a patron, clearly exceeding our objective by 10%. Also in 2021, we had, the Friends of Neil Public Library held an outdoor book sale bonanza. The, it was staged in the library's parking lot. The quote, "Gate" opened at 10:00 a.m. We had people lined up, ready to go, with their bags, with their quarters. And they made $1,505 in seven hours. Now, when you think about this in terms of quarters, it's a lot of activity in a short amount of time. The Friends also supported scavenger hunts. So the library in 2021 was really looking for ways to engage the community, to go where they were because they, they couldn't all come as freely as they used to be able to come to the library. So the scavenger hunts was a great way to do that. The Friends bought the books, we put them out. You can see Rachel Ritter, our youth service librarian, on her bicycle. She went through all of the different spaces in Pullman Parks and Trails and, and downtown. And she put these books out for people to find, and they were theirs to keep. All right, I'll end on that note. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, first of all? Okay, Nathan?
Not a question. Joanna, I've just seen you, you embody everything that I feel is important here in Pullman and the community. And the way you've always continued to grow, not only as a leader, but also put your staff first and be able to help them grow and provide a real home, a community center for Pullman. I just, I'm always astounded, and it's not because I used to spend so much time there as a child. It is also because I, it is, it feels like a second home there. And I just want to thank you for your continued service. The memorial was amazing. It just, yeah, thank you so much for weathering the storm of everything that we've had and sticking with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eileen?
Yeah, we're going to be sorry to see you go. But can you share with us a little bit of what's special events we've got planned for the 100th anniversary?
I can. So there will be something every day that, from June 21st, that Tuesday through the Saturday, there'll be something good every day. So you're going to want to come down every day. We're doing a compare and contrast in different ways. So through photo telling, through, oh my goodness, we had, we found old circulation, handwritten circulation records. So it's, it's just many different ways to see what service was like then and what service is like now. And then it culminates in what we're calling an open house on Saturday. And we will have, thanks to the Friends, we will have some pretty awesome treats that will be available. We will be having, that Tuesday night, we will be having John Anderson, history, local historian, John Anderson, come back. And he has produced a, an accounting of the library's history, which is also available on our website and also available for checkout in the library. But he will come and give a presentation that Tuesday night. So something every day, but if, if you want to come a little bit every day and then hit us on Saturday, you'll also get some really good treats.
Thank you for that promo because I'm thinking that perhaps, because our library is so good and everyone enjoys being there and it's always fun and it's noisy, that you might have a section outside for some person just to say, shh, quiet, you can't have fun in a library, just to celebrate those years and how much we've progressed in the meantime.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
With that, I'm going to go to Becky next.
Joanna, I just wanted to echo gratitude for your service over these years. It's one of the things I love about the way you lead, the library, the Friends, all of it, is that you really have a sense of leadership as service. And I think you're the kind of leader that is the best of Pullman and that I personally have always wanted to emulate. We're going to miss you an awful lot. As hard as we can make it for you to go, we certainly will. And that Gritman is so, so lucky to have you. And just thank you, thank you for your decades of service.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, Anne?
Thank you. Well, Joanna, as a present board member, I've been through, I've seen everything you've done through the pandemic for sure. But one of the things I most appreciate about the library is just how you really make it a community center. And it really is. And it helps people, like when you, you said, I'm, we're just going to leave the Wi-Fi on 24 hours so people can come and they don't have to come in the building. And you know, people think of the library as children's story hour and go get a book or I can read a magazine, but our library is so much more. And that's so much because of what you've done. And appreciate it.
Okay, Pat Wright?
We've been through it all, haven't we, Joanna?
Yes, we have.
Finally getting some security returned.
I know, I know. There, there were a lot of fits and starts there at the initial timeframe. But we have just been so blessed to have you be our library director. And I know that took some coaxing and persuasion to...
And work with Olympia, I remember too, yes.
To have you do that. And certainly, you have repaid the city of Pullman tenfold with everything that you do. And personally, I will miss you very much, not to mention that the city will miss you unbelievably. So best of luck to you and your new employer needs to make sure they know how lucky and fortunate they are to have you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Frances?
Thank you. We, we talked earlier and, and as, as Patton and Mayor Johnson alluded to, we've been, been around a lot and, and it was, it's been great watching you grow into the job and into the, into the position. And even when you had skill sets but didn't have credentials getting, getting you there. And it's something that you've, you've done fabulous and really improved our library. I've enjoyed the conversations, especially around literacy and the community and ways in, in order to improve literacy. I, I very much appreciate that, the work that you've done. And you're, you're definitely going to be missed. And I do have to tell one story from the last Friends of the Library. I got to help out with the, the last book sale. And at 10:00 it started and there was a line of over 70 people out the door, so many that we couldn't fit them into the heck room. We actually had to, had to stop people from going in the heck room because we were exceeding, we were going to exceed fire code. But I have a picture that I'm going to have to send to you of one person that came out from that book sale. Because that was, you could, you could buy by the bag and you could bring your bag. And this was a young lady and the bag was probably that tall and was half her height. And she literally ended up having to get a help to get out the library because of how many books she got into her bag. So it, it just shows how much people enjoy and appreciate the opportunity to read and they value it and they understand the importance of it. And I know we're going to hear later from you, I'd weigh, you know, specifically around that literacy and reading piece. But thank you for the leadership and you will be missed.
And I know I've communicated that to you, how important you've been to our library, that you brought fun, you brought personality, you've brought, you know, this, you're just the face of the library. And that's so important for us. And we could all see in your presentation tonight, your area of interest in organizational structure and how you're trying to get things to be more efficient, which is what you're going to be doing in your new employer over in Moscow. So again, we thank you for, and I, I think, Mike, we center to that training too. Unfortunately, it's just coming back that, yeah, okay. But anyway, congratulations and all that and your great... But anyway, congratulations and all that, and your great, your great contributions to our library. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I wanna thank all of you for your comments. Your words deeply touch my heart. You're not making it easy to leave.
Oh, we hope so.
Yes. But, but truly, I, I absolutely have to tell you all that it has been a deep honor and privilege to have served the city, to have served our community, and to have served our team at the library. You have an amazing group of dedicated, passionate public servants at the library. And through your wisdom and your collaboration with the library board, I know that the interim leadership and the transition towards permanent leadership will be smooth sailing. So, I thank you for all of that, and thank you for your collaboration over the years.
And working with Joanna, Mike and I have talked with, and we, Dan Owens will be the interim in the meantime. You also, before you leave the podium-
Sure.
-because I know there's something dear to your heart in the consent agenda tonight too. So, you might wanna just mention a little bit about the Sherrod Family Memorial, the Thomas and Winifred Neal Endowment, Nonna Rae Lynch Memorial donations, that all help the library. I know you, this is coming up at consent, we don't usually talk that much about it, but you're the library director, so go ahead and talk about it.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, so the Sherrod Endowment is, without the Sherrod Endowment, we would not have the Heritage Edition, plain and simple. He was passionate about local history, and in the day, he came to the, the library director and said, "Hey, if I gave you some money, would you create a space to house local history?" And the library said, "Of course, yes." And so, through an agreement with the city, his endowment continues to provide funding for the maintenance of the edition and for the, the supplies, like the blinds that we have in the edition are funded through the Heritage Edition, through the Sherrod Endowment. So, the, the consent agenda item tonight, accepting funds from the Sherrod Endowment, that is for ongoing maintenance in the Heritage Edition, to keep it as beautiful a space as it can be. The Thomas and Winifred Neal Endowment, and these are all friends, funds, I would say, that are managed by Inovia Foundation. The Thomas and Winifred Neal Foundation Fund, excuse me, is, Thomas, Thomas and Winifred loved audiobooks, and back then it was audio cassette books. And so, when they established the fund, the request was, "Please continue, continue to use some of this funding to support some form of audiobook." And then they also, in their wisdom, knew that libraries' needs may change and evolve, and so there was also an allowance to use the funds to enlarge and improve the library. The Nonna Rae Lynch Fund, so Nonna Rae Lynch was, was passionate about the arts and in particular, dance. And so, when she passed, her family established this fund and asked that the funds be used to purchase, create, library materials that pertain to some form of the arts, whether it's art, or music, or dance, or anything that was creative that pertained to the arts. And so, we actually built a whole list of over 100 items that we would, that we purchased with, using these funds. And so, thank you for the opportunity to, to acknowledge those donations. It, it is another example of how the library would not be the library it is today without support from the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know you're very passionate about that, and I wanna make sure you had a chance to explain it in your last annual meeting and report. Okay. So, with that, we now move to our next presentation from the United Way of Whitman County. I would like to go to the board member of United Way who's served very admirably in the United Way Board, Ann Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. For almost 100 years, the United Way of Whitman County has fought for the health, education, and financial stability of everyone in our community. That mission continues by bringing Dolly Parton's Imagination Library to every child in Whitman County ages zero to five. Dolly Parton's dream was to foster a love of reading among preschoolers and their families. She wanted to ensure that every child would have access to quality books regardless of their family's income. This initiative, which launched in 1996, is now a national and global program managed by the Dollywood Foundation and brought to you by the United Way of Whitman County. United Way of Whitman County is committed to childhood development and has made Dolly Parton's Imagination Library available to all families in Whitman County with children ages zero to five at absolutely no cost to them. Eric Frigerin is here tonight to share how these books can have a positive impact on childhood literacy in our community. Eric has served as the executive director of United Way since 2020, and he's here to provide an update on the program since it has been launched in March. And I will say too, that we've been working with Joanna as, in the library, as enrollment champ, as an enrollment champion, so we will be having some materials at the library, and they also are allowing us to have registration forms go out in the age-appropriate grab-and-go bag so that we can get it out to as many people in our community as possible. So, thank you, Joanna, for that. And Eric, here you are.
Councilmember Ann, thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. Council and Mayor, thank you for inviting United Way of Whitman County here today to talk about Imagination Library. I'm so excited. I have my Imagination Library hat on, and I'm ready to share how Pullman and the community can invest in early childhood literacy through the Imagination Library program. And according to the National Research Council, most of the reading problems that are faced by adolescents and young adults do stem from those early childhood years. And that's where the Imagination Library fits right in. It was founded by Dolly Parton, and again, it is a free book giving program for children zero to five years old. Dolly Parton believed that if you can read, you really can do anything. You can dream anything, you can be anything, and through her Imagination Library program, she wants to make sure that every child has access to books at home regardless of their environment in which they live in. And this is a global program, covers five countries right now. 172 million books have been mailed to over 1.9 million, million children since it started. Couple other program highlights is a really easy turnkey operation. United Way Whitman County is the local affiliate, and it's really easy for families to register for this wonderful program. It is contactless, and so books are mailed directly from the Dollywood Foundation to the childhood, children's home, so there's no, you know, contact with, with the books. It's mailed straight to the child, children's home. And it's a really awesome opt-in, opt-out format. Families can go online, they can sign up, they have their own login, that they can see what upcoming children's books are, are being sent that month. They can see the titles and information of that book. They can change their address if they're moving. And what's really awesome is that if a, a family with a child is moving to a different area, they can transfer to that local Imagination Library program, if that program exists in that zip code, and so that's really awesome. And plain and simple, this program reaches more children than any other early learning child book gifting program in, in the world. And so, this really is a top-tier program we brought to Whitman County, and we're really excited to get all the children enrolled in. There is a awesome quality book selection. There is a national selection committee that makes sure that the criteria for the books are all right, it's age-appropriate, and the books are inclusive. A couple of books that the child receives, once the child registers the Imagination Library program, they receive Little Engine That Could, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with.
It worked for a lot of us.
Yeah, I know. Me personally, me personally too. Another one is Hooray Piñata, Happy Birthday Clara. Clara wants some piñata for her birthday party, and she picks one shaped like an adorable little dog and names it Lucky, but if she keeps Lucky, then she won't have a piñata at her birthday party. What's a birthday girl to do? We have Hair Love by Matthew A. Cherry. Sometimes Love Looks Like Braids, Puffs, and Twists. He's an Academy Award-winning creator. Here's another one. Excellent Ed, An Excellent Family Needs An Excellent Dog. And so, like I said before, all these books are inclusive, and they cover a variety of feel-good topics. Also, every single year, there are two bilingual books in English and Spanish per child in every age group. And also, books are available in Braille, which is awesome. And my favorite part of this program is that there is universal coverage. Everybody, every child zero to five years old is able to access it. It removes all barriers to these books, and so they're able to access these books regardless of ethnicity, income status, geographical location. I know Whitman County is a, is a huge area, and our library system covers a lot of the county, but no matter where you live, you can get a, a book mailed directly to your door. And Dolly Parton, she puts a lot of money, she is an angel, she puts a lot of money into this program herself, which really makes it cost-effective for local affiliates like United Way Whitman County to participate in, and then children also get the highest quality books that they receive at their door. Probably much to no surprise, this program has received a number of awards, one of which is from the Library Congress, Addressing Social Barriers to Childhood Literacy. And a certain case, of course, research has shown that there is a positive correlation between when a child is registered in the Imagination Library and how ready a child is for kindergarten, their kindergarten readiness score. Data shows that the longer a child is in the Imagination Library program, the more ready they are for kindergarten. And then a little bit about what United Way Whitman County does as the local affiliate. Any 501(c)(3) nonprofit can be a local affiliate, and United Way Whitman County is, is that local affiliate, and we cover all zip codes in Whitman County. And our responsibilities, of course, include paying for the monthly enrollment services and enrollment invoices for the program. Right now, it comes to about two, it comes to $2.10 per book, $25.20 a year per child, but we have received funding entirely statewide. Every Imagination Library affiliate in Washington State has received 50% supplemental funding through the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And so, we can give a child a free book to them for $1.05 instead of $2.10, which is really awesome. Another responsibility of the local affiliate is managing the participant database that I talked about earlier, where children, sorry, where parents can adjust their children's information and see what awesome books are coming in that month. And then also, probably one of the most important responsibilities is what I'm doing right now is engaging community members, leaders, in, engaging them in order to become champions of this program. And so, we need to get the word out. I am, you know, a one-staff organization, and so I'm not gonna be able to register the almost 2,054 children eligible for this program in Whitman County. And there is, according to the last Census Bureau, there is about 2,054 children eligible for this program in Whitman County, and I'm sure we all know we have a very transient population, and that could be, that number could be well above 2,054. But since launching the program in March, we have registered 374 children in Whitman County, and we are counting, and 216 of those children are in Pullman. And so, we do have a lot of work to do, both in Pullman and Whitman County, and we hope that you can be champions with us in spreading the word about this program. We aim to register 65% of that eligible population, what happens to be about 1,300 children, and that's good, including the 50% match from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, will be paying about $16,821 per year. And United Way Whitman County is committed to that amount for the foreseeable future. But we do want to secure additional funding partners, and so we have talked to a number of service groups, the local library, large businesses, hospitals, you know, churches. We really need as many champions in order to hit that 1,300 number. And then I'd like to kind of end on some really awesome news. The Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction has a contract to expand the program statewide, and this was passed through the legislature, House Bill 2068. And on January 19th, what happens to be Dolly Parton's birthday, that House bill was introduced, and it passed both houses with a pretty good bipartisan vote. And Governor Inslee signed that on May, March 11th. And so, what this legislation does is it will codify the Imagination Library as a statewide program under the Cabinet of Department of Children, Youth, and Families in consultation with the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And this really was one of the steps built into the expansion of the Imagination Library to the entire state, because we really need the backing of the state in order to secure that additional funding and then well, as well as reach every corner of Washington State. And this really has become a dream come true, because Washington State is the first state on the West Coast to become a statewide program, which is something we should all be proud about, and the 11th nationally to become a statewide program. And then, so if you know a child, a family that wants to register with the Imagination Library program, they can by going to whitmanunited.org/imaginationlibrary. And then also, if you would like to sponsor a child, it's, you know, not $2.10 now, it's $1.05, we'll give a, a child a free book for, for a month. You know, $12 or more, we'll provide them with a free book for a whole year. And so, in my mind, that is a steal in terms of getting books into the hands of, of children. And so, you can also become a sponsor for United Way Whitman County Imagination Library by going to our website, whitmanunited.org, and going to donate. And with that being said, I will open up for questions.
Well, I know we're innovative here in Whitman County, and you've done some really good things here. Are other United Way agencies across the country doing the same program with Dolly Parton?
Yes, so any 501(c)(3) nonprofit can, but specifically, United Ways of the Pacific Northwest, which is a, a bigger cohort of United Ways, of, of local United Ways, is in char, is being the steering committee of the expansion into the Washington State. And so, we have a fantastic executive director, Brooke Fisher-Clark, who is the exec director of that project, and she's worked with, she is the one who worked with the legislators to get House Bill 2068 passed in the Washington State House and Senate.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you, Eric. I enjoyed the presentation that you also made to the Pullman Chamber General Membership Luncheon a few weeks ago, and this certainly expanded on that, so thank you very much for that. Just a, a couple of questions. If someone wanted just to actually donate, not necessarily sponsor, but make a, a donation to the Imagination Library, would they then contact you or go into the Whitman County Humane Society?
Also a good organization.
No Freudian slip.
Yeah.
United Way of Whitman County website to do that.
Yeah, there's, there's two ways that you can donate directly to the program. If you type in Imagination Library and go to the main program webpage, which is the global webpage, and see our local affiliate, you can actually contribute directly to our invoices. And so, that is, that will help us pay directly for the cost of books. If you do donate to United Way Whitman County and designate those funds to the Imagination Library, it helps with a more local outreach. And so, we do need funds to travel to Tico, Rosalia, Oaksdale, those locations that, you know, social media doesn't, doesn't reach. And so, we need to be in-person, talking to those people on the ground in order to register every kid in those areas.
Okay, great. And then the other question that I have is if one wanted to volunteer to do registrations or to kind of be part of a speakers bureau, bureau, or whatever other kinds of things you're trying to get done through outreach, can they also just contact you? What's the best way to do that?
Absolutely. Great question. Yeah, you can message us at contact@whitmanunited.org. We also have a volunteer signup on our website at whitmanunited.org. And we do need, you know, those folks able to table at one of the many summer events that we have planned for, you know, Whitman County. A lot of people are, wanna get out of the house, including me, given what we've experienced these past two years, and so we, we're gonna need in-person table registrations. And those are two ways that folks can help volunteer for the Imagination Library.
Great. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Becky?
Yes, I wanna echo Pat's thank you for what you're doing in United Way and all that great work. And my only question is, is if we volunteer at the tabling, can we get a picture with the Dolly cutout? Is that a possibility?
I actually, I think Dolly, if those of you don't know, we actually have a, a Dolly cutout, and she's been traveling to all the local library- cutout and she's been traveling to all the local library branches. I think she may be either in Tico or Colfax right now, but absolutely, yeah, she is the biggest, you know, champion of the Imagination Library Program. And, you know, parents, children just love, you know, seeing, so many people know Dolly Parton and it really speaks to her leadership as a, as a person and individual that she's willing to put so much of her time and money into this program. And so of course, we want people to take a picture with Dolly Parton, of course.
And you read some of her bio and very instrumental with the children's books and what helped give her imagination and work with that is, it's amazing. So, Anne?
Thank you. Well, that was my first question was where's Dolly?
I know.
You're missing half your presentation partner. But also I just wanted to kind of go back to what we talked about, about community and helping and that the library system, both Neil Public and Whitman County Library System, Whitman County Library System has been instrumental in getting this program out into the county. And we actually saw higher numbers out in the county first because Eric and some volunteers were having enrollment events at the county libraries and it was, it was, it's amazing. So it's just a really great program and yeah, come out and see Dolly this summer. She's not very tall.
But she sings good and works nine to five. So, and more. All right. Eric, thanks so much for the presentation and especially the work you're doing with United Way. And I know you're probably still taking fun for Malden and others places, you still have that. And that was a great, great help to fill in some of the gaps that United Way did. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we now move to item number three for the draft Pullman Strategic Tourism Plan. And we're going to start with council member sitting next to me right now. I know it's Pat because I was going to, how many members you have? You have a seven-person steering committee and you've been the chair of it. And so with that, I'm going to turn over the presentation to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So unfortunately, one of our people that we've been working with on this plan was not able to join us tonight in person. But did I understand correctly that they are going to be on virtually? There we go, maybe.
Oh, no, Jen's already talked to him today. I mean, within what, 15 minutes ago before the meeting started, you double checking everything, so.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, perfect. Hello, Joe, thank you. And Kirsten?
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening, everybody. My apologies for not being there in person tonight. Unfortunately, it's late, the afternoon on Sunday, I got a positive COVID test and I'm sequestered here in our house. And Kirsten, as you, as you all know, is my business partner as well as my wife. And she is, she and the rest of the family are safely in other parts of the house away from me and been isolating since. And unfortunately, that means I was not able to be there tonight in person, so I apologize for that. And also joining us via phone is Tripp Muldro from Arnett Muldro and he'll chime in when we get to the branding audit. So what I wanted to do tonight was just give you an update on where we are with the Strategic Tourism Plan. I believe the council has received a, what we refer to as a working draft because it very much is. There's going to be changes, some additions and some, and some subtractions that you'll probably hear tonight versus the, the written copy that you've already received. So keep in mind as we talk about these things tonight, that this is still kind of a work in progress, but we just want to update the council here this evening all at once. So as we get going here, let me make sure I can advance the slides.
So while he's putting that together, oops. While he's putting that together, I just wanted to say, from, from the committee standpoint, what a pleasure it has been to work with Joe and Kirsten and Tripp. We engaged them to do a study of our tourism plan and the tourism environment in which we were operating. And they certainly did not disappoint in the, the product that they have produced thus far. I have to say that it's thorough, it's in-depth, with great attention to detail, and they are also absolutely fabulous and very responsive to, to work with. So we certainly have appreciated your engagement, your professionalism and, you know, your, your insight into what we have been looking at. It doesn't seem as though you guys live two or 3,000 miles away from here. You could very easily be part of our Pullman community. So it is really my, my pleasure to introduce all of you to present your draft plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pat. I really appreciate that, the introduction, that means a lot to us. We try very hard with all the communities that we work with to see through the eyes of a local. And I think we, we feel a special affinity for Pullman, being the home of WSU. We live in East Lansing, Michigan, which is Michigan State University. So we, some very strong similarities between our, our two college towns, even though that occasionally from time to time, our schools play in the, in the Rose Bowl against each other. It's, it's certainly, it's been nice to, to get out to and see Pullman and look forward to being back there. So I'm going to jump into this, we've got quite a bit to cover and I know we don't have a ton of time, so I want to be respectful of what's time, but I'll move kind of quick as we go through this. First of all, the plan's goals, we want to make sure that, you know, we're very clear about what the Strategic Tourism Plan's goals are. One is to increase the overnight visitors to Pullman and specifically during the week in what we call shoulder season. So being a college town, which interesting, one of the things we found in some of this data was that it's not necessarily June, July and August because you've got some very successful events that we'll talk about here in a minute. But it's really May, once school gets out in May, and then December and January again when, when school gets out. It's a little different shoulder season than we see in other communities, but still what we would refer to as a shoulder season. The second goal is to increase tourism product and services and again, provide more opportunities for small businesses. We think that having unique and locally owned businesses is really important in creating an attractive tourism product for, for visitors as well as creating an overall quality community. And then lastly, the improved communication between the, the tourism organizations. And while there's, pardon me, while there's currently, you know, the chamber who's doing the majority of this work, doing the majority of the tourism work, which we support, we think they, they're doing a phenomenal job. Tourism really is kind of a team sport. And so we'll talk more about, you know, how these other groups can work together. And again, underlying all of this is our overall philosophy of, we think that a really good tourism product from a community standpoint is a really good community which to live. And so one of the things that you'll, you'll hopefully piece together, as we, piece together as we talk about these recommendations and some of the background here, is that our goal is to be able to help Pullman become a better place for the residents because visitors will find a great product like that where people, you know, where people want to live is where visitors want to visit. So I'll go into more in that in just a minute. Again, I want to talk just real briefly, this is just an introduction about what is tourism. And again, it's people traveling and staying outside of their normal area for leisure or business or other purposes for more than, excuse me, for not more than a year. And then typically when we talk about tourism products, we talk about things like hotels and hospitality, restaurants and, you know, spas, those types of things, cultural attractions, museums, shopping, festivals, events, all those types of things all feed into what a tourism product is. So who is a visitor? And so there's a really specific definition that we're using here. This is from the World Tourism Organization. It's basically a 50-mile radius. And 50 miles is pretty much the international line, so to speak, in which, you know, the international tourism community uses that 50-mile or more. I don't know if it is kilometers, it's very, outside of the United States, it's kilometers. But for 50 miles or more is typically where we, you know, see, you know, where a visitor is from versus somebody who's local. And what does that look like for Pullman? So this, we just threw out a map, the orange line that you can see on the screen there, that's the 50-mile radius. So you can see that certainly encompasses places like Moscow and Lewiston and Clarkston. And, but just outside of that is Spokane. And you've got, you know, you've got other cities that I think are fairly common to, to Pullman. But again, give me a good idea in terms of what we consider anything beyond 50 miles. Some folks have seen this chart already. This is, I think, a really fascinating chart. One of the things we did during the data portion of this is that we put up a, what we call a geofence, which is a tool that major retail corporations, real estate firms use all over the country. And it measures basically cell phone movement. And it's not, it doesn't allow us to get to like a block or a house level, allows us to what we call the zip code plus four level. So it kind of gets us to a neighborhood so we can kind of figure out where folks are coming from, going to. And we were able to look as far back as 2017. And you can see certainly, you know, during the pandemic where we see that big kind of dip. But an interesting thing has happened, you know, since then, especially since about, about football season 2021. And one of the hoteliers there, I think, used the term, it's the first time we'd heard it, but we've now since heard it since and we've used it ourselves, is that we're seeing this wave of revenge tourism where people were, you know, they spent 2020 being good, staying home, and then now as, as restrictions start to lift, we're starting to see people kind of, you know, travel with a little bit of vengeance. Like it's this pent-up demand that people are, are going to go on vacation, they're going to go to their favorite places. And I think that's just important to, to recognize that during all this, Pullman is benefiting from that increase in traffic. I also want to share with you where folks are coming from. So I mentioned that zip code plus four level. You can see according to this map on a dot basis, where in the general Washington State area, where folks are coming from. Obviously you've got quite a few people here amongst the, the quad cities between Pullman, Moscow, Lewiston and Clarkston, but up to Spokane and then over to Seattle, Yakima area. And I'm going to step, another step out so you can see where in the United States where, you know, this relative volume of traffic comes from. And we've got some other pretty interesting bright spots. So we've got, you know, northern to central California between San Francisco to San Jose, you've got LA down to San Diego, you've got Denver, you've got Salt Lake City, you've got, you know, looks like Austin, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, you're looking at Chicago and Iowa City. So you're seeing this, you know, the, the number of folks who are coming to Pullman is really kind of, it's all over the place and there's representatives from every major metro. But really when we start trying to focus in on what we can quantify, it's really kind of the Western United States is what we want to try to focus on. And in particular, you know, again, that greater Washington State area, leading to Idaho, Little Montana, and then of course, you know, looking at California, Colorado, Utah. This gives a, this is a breakdown of chart of the zip codes. Again, I mentioned distract to that zip code plus four. This is the top 20 zip codes of visitors who've been to Pullman since 2017. Interestingly enough, so even though you see this top 20, Spokane, the 99208 in Spokane accounts for 1.4% of visitors. That's the, that's the highest concentration is in Spokane at 1.4%, which isn't terribly high. So the interesting take from this, from our, from our point of view, is that there is a wide despora of places from the country that people come to Pullman. But as you can start to see, as we, you know, the zip codes, as they go down on that list, you're seeing repetitive cities, you're seeing Spokane, you're seeing, you know, Seattle. So you're seeing these kind of major metros. We see a couple of interesting ones. Eureka, California pops up on this beyond 50-mile radius. We're not entirely sure why that is yet and we're still trying to dig into some of that. We know there's a, there's some sort of company affiliation potentially with SEL, but we're still trying to explore that a little bit more in terms of what exactly that is. But that's an interesting one, certainly has really gone down the list. Fremont and Boise, Idaho, and Las Cruces, New Mexico also pop up, which is all interesting. My apologies, I'm muting from time to time as, as the, as referring to clear my throat, my apologies for that. I want to talk a little bit about strategy input. We went through a process that was pretty extensive and I'm not going to go into the results of those SWOT analyses tonight because it's probably pretty time consuming to do so. But I do want to just point out, we've been really impressed with the amount of engagement that we've had in Pullman. We had 321 online survey responses and those survey responses, we had hoped to get about 100. So we saw more than three times what we had hoped to get from the community. We had 51 people participate in either the focus groups or one-on-one interviews to have conversations with us over the last several months. We had a total of eight focus groups representing a number of industries. And then we finally had that public meeting at the end of February where we had 23 meeting participants who were highly engaged in discussing a lot of the different activities. So we were very, very pleased, we were impressed with the, with the amount and the, and the volume and the quality of the engagement from the community in participating in the construction of this. I will tell you that the community input too is, is important to us because the SWOT analyses, all the different data that we collect informs us, but it doesn't necessarily dictate. And so you'll see as we talk about some of these recommendations, I'm sure you'll hear the voices of other people who've said similar things in the community. But there are some things that, that aren't in there that, that may, that, you know, may make them up too as, as people talk, we'll talk about more of that as we go. So let's get right into those recommendations. I'm going to pause for just a second, take a drink. So let's get into this. So we really, we put it into four different categories for these recommendations. First is tourism sites and attractions. And so these are the physical places, which we can talk about marketing and communication as well. And then the branding and auditing, excuse me, the branding audit and elements and Tripp Muldro will chime in on that. And then lastly, we wanted to discuss the idea around the tourism promotion area. There's been some developments since the written draft that we want to make sure that we, that we share with the group that we've done a little bit of research on, we wanted to share some of those results with you. So sites and attractions. There's a few areas here, first and foremost, the number one tourism attraction in, in Pullman without a doubt is, is WSU. And when we look at the two biggest draws to WSU is clearly Martin Stadium and Bailey Coliseum. And our recommendations for the community, including WSU, is to make better use of these assets. Martin Stadium is a tremendous stadium, it's beautiful, it's, it's, it presents itself well. It could potentially host larger sized concerts during summertime and, and spring and fall. Recently Boise State hosted Garth Brooks and that was a fantastic result. As a matter of fact, Boise State is now looking at how to explore using their stadium for more concerts. So we think that would be something, a model for Martin Stadium to follow. And then better use of Bailey Coliseum, not only for indoor events like, like concerts, but also better utilization of the, of the building for hosting youth tournaments. And that's something we're going to talk about some of the recommendations for the, for events is the potential for Pullman, Pullman's already recognized for the Blue Summer Series, which is a fantastic effort put on by local volunteers. We are huge fans of what this, what this does and is doing for the community. And we'd love to see that expanded and expanded to potentially host, you know, AAU basketball or soccer tournaments or, you know, other types of tournaments that could be held potentially that December to January shoulder season or in those, in that early spring to early summer period. But better utilizing the Coliseum, the Bailey Coliseum in that way would be one of our, one of our key recommendations there for WSU. The second piece, and we'll be, we'll clearly, you know, we want to make sure that we fully acknowledge the fact that some of these recommendations border on what would be covered in Downtown Master Plan. Excuse me, one second. The downtown is outside of WSU, the biggest tourism attraction for the community. And there's a number of, of things that popped up during the public input sessions, during our own observations, that we think that the city would do well to heed and the community would do well to heed in order to, to make downtown more attractive. So first is address blight and deteriorating facades. We all know that there's a couple of buildings and probably one in particular that gets the, the wrath of the community in terms where we talk about blight. Certainly don't want to discount, you know, the, the community's opinion on that, but we also feel that the rest of the facades, that there's a number of facades in downtown that are deteriorating that, and it may be a case where people want to say, well, nobody's going to do anything about that building, why should you do anything about mine? But the lower hanging fruit may be to be able to help work with some of those deteriorated facades and then leave some of the bigger projects into, for a later time. My apologies. Next is to improve wayfinding. One of the things that we found very interesting was the, and this plays into the next point as well, is the overall pedestrian experience. It's not terribly friendly to people on foot. And when it get, when it comes down to tourism spending and the spending of, of folks in downtown, people on foot spend more and more money than people in cars. And so making sure that the pedestrian experience is, is pleasurable for folks as they're walking around downtown, including the wayfinding signage of knowing where the parking is, of knowing where, you know, other attractions are. And even, you know, to allow for, and I know the city code allows for this. And my apologies, I just realized I have a typo on there, it's Beasley Coliseum, not Bailey Coliseum. I so, my apologies for WSU for that. But on the wayfinding issue, the idea of doing what we call blade signs or perpendicular, signs that are perpendicular to the buildings for businesses. So it's more oriented towards people on foot than it would be necessarily to cars. One of the issues, again, this kind of intertwines into, yeah, another recommendation. One of the issues, again, this kind of intertwines into, yeah, another recommendation, is to look at eliminating one-way traffic because the whole goal of one-way traffic is to move cars quickly through an area. That's why, that's why freeways are one-way. That's why, you know, highways, you know, oftentimes are divided to go to one ways. So eliminating, by eliminating one-way traffic, you know, that allows for things to slow down. But again, if you don't want to be, you don't want to have your downtown signage oriented towards folks, particularly for businesses by, because of speeding traffic. And then lastly, what we realize is a huge ongoing issue with, within the community is the idea around seeking an alternative truck, truck traffic route. We were, we were curious when we were there whether or not, you know, people, we work in a lot of communities and a lot of times folks will say, well, we've got truck traffic issues. And we'll go down and there's a, there's a state highway through the downtown and yeah, there's some truck traffic. I think we were downtown cursing about was it 90 seconds before the first couple of trucks came rumbling through and then it was pretty consistent through there. And so I can tell you that, that is indeed, you know, we will validate anybody who says truck traffic is an issue in downtown. We, we saw it firsthand. It was like a random Tuesday or Wednesday or whatever it was when we incurred, when we incurred that. Let's see, moving on. Youth sports complex. I mentioned earlier the Paloo's Summer Series and what a, what a great asset that is for the community. We know that there's been discussions by several folks within the community about creating youth sports complex. We're not going to necessarily endorse any particular plan or site right now for anything related to that, but we do think that there's merit in pursuing a large sports complex aimed at youth sports. Youth sports is a $4.2 billion industry on an annual basis. And we think Pullman is well positioned by having WSU there, by having a great foundation with the Paloo's Summer Series, that having a larger sports complex, that could be a combination of things, which would be including baseball or softball and/or soccer, and then having a field house that could, that could host basketball or volleyball or some of those other types of sports would be very valuable in terms of being able to attract people to, to Pullman. The Pullman Moscow Airport. We realize that there's, there's been some curtailing of the Alaska Airlines flights since the pandemic. But working with Alaska Airlines to continue to expand those flights, we think is a priority. And then looking at adding additional carriers and, you know, looking at folks like Delta or, excuse me. I'm really sorry about that. Excuse me. Sorry, but looking at additional carriers potentially to be able to service the airport would be important. And then lastly, what we neglected to include in the, in the working draft that you saw earlier, that we'd wanted to include it, we're going to include in the subsequent version, is expansion of the arts and culture. We were neglecting in mentioning such tremendous assets that you have in the community, like the Gladys Community Cultural Center and the Elson Floyd Cultural Center at WSU. Arts and culture are a great tourism draw and we want to make sure that those, the potential for those expansions continue. And then lastly, the extensive trail system and outdoor assets that the community has is to continue to expand on those, connect those and to create, you know, more, more and better promoted tourism draws related to those, those outdoor activities, including those, those trail systems. We want to transition real quick to marketing and communications. We have four, four major recommendations when it comes to this. The first is the visitor's guide. The visitor's guide is currently put out by the Chamber. We, we love the work that the Chamber is doing. The visitor guide is combined with the Chamber membership directory. We really would encourage the visitor guide to be a separate document as much as possible as opposed to being a combined. I'm a former Chamber executive. I understand, you know, exactly, you know, why you want to do that because there's a lot of synergy there. Currently, actually, there's no tourism funds being spent on the visitor guide because it's combined. But we still think that there's value in having a more compelling visitor guide based around tourism, the tourism draws in Pullman. Second is enhanced communication. I mentioned about the, being a team sport, making sure that there's regular communication between all those entities that play a role in tourism. So it wouldn't be just necessarily the Chamber, but the Chamber, WSU, Downtown Group and the city and the other groups, Paloo's Summer Series, the Luntel Festival, a number of these other groups, a meeting on a regular basis and communicating. One of the really challenging things about working in communities is that typically we see what we refer to as the SDPs, which is the same 10 people. And that's the same people who happen to serve on this board and serve on that board, serve on another board. And so by having them, you know, actually meet, it, it really kind of, the idea is that all those people who have the same 10 people, they all talk to each other, but in reality, it doesn't really necessarily happen. So making sure that there's a concentrated effort to bring those folks together once a quarter, to be able to have those types of open kind of conversations about what, you know, what's the plan, what's going on with this, what's going on with that? And being able to have that kind of clear game plan going forward would be important. Next, we want to talk about expanding photography based tourism. We recognize that, you know, the sheer beauty of the region lends itself to photography and that currently there's a great section on, on the Chamber and the Visit Pullman website about photography. But what we mean by this is really kind of formalizing that, working with some of the local farmers, being able to identify specific places to send photographers. And so it's not necessarily, you know, I'm sure what probably aggravates a lot of the local farmers is when photographers go trapping across their crops. So making sure that, you know, we're being, excuse me, able to. And then lastly is improved search engine optimization. Making sure that Pullman is able to come up on any of the local searches for, excuse me, any of the internet searches based on Google or Yahoo, or any of the popular SEOs to allow for the Visit Pullman site to be able to come up in the, in the top list. Currently, they don't come up in lists for WSU or Pullman or any of these other key terms, which we think is really important. And just in time, I'm gonna turn this over to Trip so I can get out for a second. Excuse me.
Well, I hope Joe, you'll continue to advance the slides. It's a pleasure to see you all, Mayor and Council, and great to join you. And I'm just freshly back in the hotel room with a high school graduate who just graduated an hour ago. So we were kind of racing against time. I'll be brief. On the branding audit and elements, really what we want to do, what the draft does is, the report is articulate the value of having a quality tourism brand and evaluate the brands in Pullman to understand how the story of the community is being told. And then also looking at the regional brands, just to understand how that stacks up as well. And then we go into some preliminary recommendations for branding identity for Pullman itself in the branding audit and elements here. So that's what I'll touch on last. And so when we look at what's happening in the community, you'll see very common, you're graduating to the tower, tower, which is a very common element that we see in communities that have a strong architectural identity. You also see the relationship to the railroad and then having worked in 20 communities across the state of Washington and many in Eastern Washington, you also have wheat that shows up and, and representation of the lush landscape of the community. This is often what we encounter in communities is a variety of different brands. We start looking at a brand for visitors. What you're using here is a typeface, is pretty straightforward. We often contemplate, you know, keeping it simple, but having something that relates both to visitors and to the local population. And so when we start looking at identities for communities around Pullman. And I'll get that next slide there. Oh, sorry, Washington State. I want to contrast this too because one of the things that we see with Washington State is a very unique approach. It's something we often talk about when we, we deal with community branding. Is while communities often have what you saw on the prior slide, a variety of different brands, institutions like universities are very strong and tight with their brand guidance. Washington State is a little bit unique amongst universities in that more often than not, what we see with universities is an official brand that deals with the academic side and an athletic brand that deals with the sports side. The Cougars are such a prolific part of the university that it actually unites at Washington State. We do see the emblem here with WSU in the state of Washington. That's more often than not used with extension type work across Washington State. And you see really limited colors. So a lot of times what we're trying to do when we're working with community branding and tourism branding is tightening up the brand guidance. So there is some rails within which the marketing occurs. And so this brings me to kind of looking at what the neighbors are doing. And when we go to, there we go. I'm sorry. When we look at what the county's doing, when we look at what partners are doing in the community, you see the same thing. Very interesting. Whitman County is the only brand in the region that uses the same color as Washington State. The gravitating to the green and the blue is very common. And you see the port, very corporate looking. You see the, the airport doing exactly what you'd expect the airport to do relating to aviation. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Washington State is unique. I think many of you probably know this. In that you do not have a state tourism department under the government. It's actually a 501(c) nonprofit. You're the only state in the union that I'm aware of that has this situation. And they just went through a rebranding and it is called State of Washington Tourism, but it's not, it's, that's a little bit misleading in that it is a 501(c)(3). And then looking at Moscow, Spokane, down the valley. One of the things that we see in Moscow, again, they gravitate toward high things as well, but they don't have the same tower. They actually use the steeple of the Methodist Church, which is unique and unusual. I often don't see that. They rely more on typefaces. And then I found it interesting that their downtown district actually didn't even use the name Moscow in it. It just is a sign. We see what happens in Spokane being a much larger metro area. You see a really tight brand with the city. There's a lot of guidance on how to use those colors. The Chamber as a partner has its own identity. And then tourism in Spokane, which you see is the third one. This one also has very strong guidance and it is open source for tourism partners to use in the Spokane area. And so that tree logo you see can be inverted and be hearts and you see all these things kind of pan out in the community. And then down with Lewis Clark Valley, you see that the tourism brand and the Chamber are co-mingled. So this is an example of actually cross-state line marketing. And then you see downtown and the cities each with their own identities here. And so it just helps to get an idea of what's happening around when we kind of look at the family that you're working in. And that family really is how Pullman markets itself, how some of your biggest attractions market themselves and your, your partner groups and then your neighbors. And so as we move into ideas and suggestions, we want to kind of jump in on color inspiration. And we heard so many good things and, and, you know, having been to Pullman several times, the Paloo's is just so remarkable and the colors that you see. We wanted to pick up on that, those agricultural colors, the lush green that you see, that contrast with the blue of the sky. But of course, we wanted to add the colors of Washington State. So we see in our color palette on the next slide, that added in here as well. And so we end up having a full system palette that offers a variety of color combinations. And then we move into things like typography. And again, in this, we were inspired by a few things and I think this will kind of read through, I hope it'll read through strong for you, is one, the name Pullman. And this generated quite a bit of interesting research into, are you named after George Pullman or not? And we kind of, I think we reached the conclusion that we think you are. Nevertheless, the railroad history is definitely related to the community. But we also wanted something that was strong and a bit more, I don't know how to put it another way, a bit more athletic without being too sports athletic, if that makes sense, because it's a bold community. And that contrast between having the bold typeface, a little bit lighter sans serif modifier typeface, and then the really warm colors give us a palette that can be very consistent in how you communicate. And what we hope is something that can begin to really stand out with visitors who come into the entire region and come into the entire Northwest. So that's kind of where I am on that. And I'll kick it back over to you, Joe.
All right. So we'll talk, next steps, by the way, on, on, on the branding piece. Trip, actually, you want to talk about, real quick about what you're planning for June?
Yes. So I am working with staff and, and partners to be in Pullman. I don't know if we've landed on the exact date yet, the 9th or 10th of June, to do a complete branding workshop. And actually, what I hope to have prepared before that branding workshop is some additional material, kind of playing out the brand a bit more. And actually talking through with the, the community and partners how, basically doing what we call a brand score and doing a whole branding training session during that workshop day. And so we're very much looking, very much looking forward to being on the ground in the community in just a few weeks. So important stuff. Thank you, Joe.
Great. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the promotion, tourism promotion area. The tourism promotion area is a little bit, is an interesting law that you have in Washington State. It's interesting because there's, typically there's, working with tourism entities around the country, there's two types of ways of funding. It's usually either a percentage, percentage tax, or it's an assessment. And it's interesting that you're, that you do have, you know, the lodging tax, but you also have what they refer to as a charge, which my attorney friends tell me, especially my municipal attorney friends say, there's a definite difference between a charge and an assessment and a tax. But when you start to really kind of press people, they go, it's kind of the same thing. But what it really is, what we focus on, particularly for Pullman, is that the opportunity to have an additional, this charge of additional $2 per room per night or the hoteliers, you know, as long as I think about 60% of the hoteliers in the community, of the hotels have more than 40 rooms, could vote to have an additional $3 put on that. So you have additional $5 per room per night to be able to help promote the area. And what that means kind of is pretty loose in the law. And typically, most folks have a tendency to think about it as marketing. So any types of marketing costs, we certainly would agree with that. But we've also seen a few of the existing TPAs. By the way, there's 192 TPAs in Washington. And we've seen several of those pay for convention centers and some other types of destination types of products. So it's not entirely just marketing that could be used for. So then we started wondering, all right, what does that actually mean when we talk about, you know, if we were to apply this to Pullman? So based on 666 eligible rooms, which is probably not an ideal number for a lot of folks. But we just did this quick occupancy rate chart based on $2 and $5 charge and based on which occupancy. If we were to use kind of an industry standard of about 50% occupancy rate, you're looking at a $2 charge that could generate about $243,000 a year or a $5 charge that could generate $600,000 a year, certainly if there are better years than others, which we know just coming off of 2020, that that's probably not, not the, we didn't want to skew higher just because we know that there was, there's still folks, despite the revenge travel, that there's still folks who are leery about doing that. But this is a potential source of revenue that could be used to help promote the area. And we're still going to explore that a little bit more and talk with some other key stakeholders. You know, some key thing, some key things to keep in mind as we explore this is, you know, how that money would be used, who would be in charge. Obviously, it's something that the city would, would levy and collect, but you know, who would actually implement and what would be that process? Because there's some concern, I believe. I wouldn't call it concern. I would say there is, that there is, well, again, I guess concern is probably a decent word, but I mean as neutral as possible about, you know, the input that folks, you know, like the hoteliers would be able to have in that process. So we're still exploring that. We hope to have some, some final recommendations to you next month. So again, as Trip mentioned, So again, as Trip mentioned, next month, he'll be coming out to do the marketing workshop, and then we'll be wrapping these up and explore some more of these steps, identifying some additional implementation plans, steps, and partners to move forward, and then to have a final report to you by the end of June. We're also going to be integrating the feedback that folks have been giving us as we go through here. I just probably mentioned most of all of this, and then now I'll open up the questions.
So questions or comments so far? Take a look. Okay. Nathan, did you want to make a comment?
Okay. So great presentation. Really like all the information you've had here. Looks very similar to a few other studies that we've had, so I guess that's important feedback to know that everybody has similar information. My question is, why, okay, so both Palouse and Colfax are near to us. They are smaller. Palouse has had a really good arts community, and they've, they've been doing very, very well. Colfax has been doing well on their downtown. Is there a reason that those were not added as neighborhood, you know?
The neighboring communities?
Yeah.
No, honestly, we were just looking at probably what we consider the major neighbors, and those are folks who are, they have hotels, or they have, you know, places for folks to stay as a primary, you know, versus, say, like an Airbnb. You know, typically, that's why we looked at those four, because they were the, they were the largest. The other three were the largest, considering the, you know, basically the four cities of Pullman, Moscow, you know, sharing the border, and then looking at Lewiston and Clarkston sharing the border there, and those four communities could probably be the four largest in the region. And then looking at Spokane, because they're kind of, they're the larger community up the road, the region.
I think that's good, but Colfax does have a hotel, and people do stay in Palouse, especially during game days and so on. I would think it'd be important, especially looking at surrounding successes, to look at what they're, they're finding as well. Just a little input.
Okay. I appreciate that. We'll include them.
Francis?
Thank you, Glenn. I appreciate that you added Gladish Inn, because that's going to be very critical when, as they finish their build out, their build out. One other one that I'd like you to take a look at, that I would also consider as a tourism draw, is a Palouse Discovery Science Center. And Nathan's on the board can talk about it, that, you know, they have a number of buses that come in with the students that are coming from outside, so I, so they would hit that, the 50. I did, where my question came in has to do with the cell phone, and if you can explain a little bit more on the cell phone data, are you, is the cell phone data looking at cell phones that are in an area, then not in an area, or is it based on where's the cell phone registered?
So the way that the, so this is all done through a third party, and we subscribe to that data, and we get that data that way. So that's, that's the first step. Where, the way that that data works is that based on whether or not a cell phone resides at a certain place for three weeks or more, determines whether or not they consider it being a full-time resident. So basically, this would not include college students as we look at visitors as part of that, because they're on campus for more than three weeks. But it's typically that three week, whatever, wherever it rests at night is where, you know, essentially, the data company is determined to be kind of home-based.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Becky?
I have one, yes. Under tourism sites and attraction, the, the one thing that's brand new, that we're not already in some way working on, is the youth sports complex. I don't have it up right now. I think that's, that's what you called it. That's brand, that's brand, brand new. And I'm assuming that's there because, as you said, it's got some legs, right? It's got some, some support. Were there any other attraction sites, things that could be added in addition to that? Like, and I don't know the scope of the work that you're doing, but like, it sounds like a great idea. I'm, I'm like excited when you talk about it, but I'm also curious if there's anything else that might be brought in.
So we're actually, to be honest, you know, and Kirsten, Trip, and I talked about before we put the youth sports complex idea in, is typically, we don't like, we don't like suggesting, you know, $50 million projects, you know, because that's, that's typically not sustainable long-term. So when we talk about, you know, the types of projects, you know, building, Pullman has a lot of assets. You know, we go through and we're refining the asset map, which again, I know you guys saw the draft version, but we're refining that as well. There's a lot of things that attract Pullman, you know, that are attractive about Pullman, whether it's for, for visitors or whether it's for residents. I think enhancing those things are first and foremost. And again, I don't think that you need a lot of big home run swing types of attractions or, or anything like that. You've got a lot to already offer. And again, creating a quality place for your residence is going to be, you know, something that draws visitors, because visitors will always find a great place, you know, as long as you create a great place. And that's really kind of where we hung our hat on a lot of those recommendations, was refining the great things that are already there. But really kind of, in downtown, really, as part of that, to me, I think is probably the single largest, if you're going to say, pick one big priority, I'd say the stuff that, as it relates to downtown, because that affects the most people. It affects the most businesses, it affects the most residents, and it affects the most visitors, because at the end of the day, it's, you know, making sure that we, you've got a quality place outside of WSU for folks to come.
Yeah. And this thought just occurred to me, so I'm completely speaking off the cuff here, which may be dangerous. But as we're thinking about that sports complex, and you know, you were talking about Beasley and bringing in, you know, music and those kinds of things, more of a town gown kind of collaboration. One of the things that occurs to me is the Student Rec Center, and that they have shoulder months as well. I just wonder if you had considered that?
Actually, I believe our, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the actual verbiage, but we'll make sure that we clarify. Using the, when we talk about using things like, you know, hosting the sports events, so it's, it's, you know, AAU basketball, or AAU volleyball, or whatever, you know, those types of youth events, that wouldn't necessarily all take place on one particular complex. That's something that needs, when you look at large-scale basketball tournaments, as an example, that requires gym space, you know, beyond typically one facility. And if you go to larger tournaments, really large tournaments, you know, they will use gym space in the surrounding, like six or seven communities. If you look at the Palouse Summer Series, they currently do that with, with baseball fields. So I would say probably, we look at those types of facilities, that would fall under when we talk about the idea of hosting more youth sports, of, you know, better utilization, I guess, of the existing assets. So that would be not just the rec center, but it would be, you know, potentially the high school gym and middle school gyms.
Got it.
And be able to leverage those existing assets during those off months.
Thank you. And then I, just real quick, to kind of return to my original question, is I understand, like enhancing what we already have, because I've lived here 25 years and I completely agree with you. If you are going to include a recommendation for a major complex, will you consider anything else besides the youth sports complex?
Can you elaborate more?
Yes. So if in your recommendations, what you recommend is a youth sports complex, what I'm asking is, is there, can we can open that up? You know, what, what else might be brand new, brought in? Might we have two smaller things? Do you know what I mean? Like, it, and I'm not entirely sure what your, your process has been in recommending the youth sports complex, but it is in here. I'm wondering if it's going to stay in, and if it is, is there any process to consider anything else?
I think we're, I think we're certainly open to hearing other ideas. You know, part of the reason that, that that was included was because of the success of the Palouse Summer Series. You know, we'd heard that there's, that there are folks who are interested in doing something like that. So that was one of the things that, you know, kind of made that rise to the top of the list. It wasn't necessarily just out of the blue. It was somebody said, hey, what do you think about this idea? And we didn't want to get into a situation where we're endorsing a particular project. The overall idea we think is good, because we do see the success that the Palouse Summer Series has built as being a foundational step. Opening up to other ideas, I think we certainly are, that's part of this process. We'd love to hear that feedback. If you've got additional thoughts on that, we'd love to hear exactly what those are. Because, you know, what I do, my caution, and this is where, this is where I mean by this, this, if I'm guarded, this is why, is I don't want us to come in and say, you know what's going to save tourism in Pullman? A minor league stadium. Like, we're not going to come and make that recommendation. That's not, that's not our firms, that's not our basis. So I, that's why I'm asking a little bit more probably questions, because when you say new things, do you mean SeaWorld, or do you mean, you know, like, you know, expansion of the Arts and Science Center? So I, to me, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what kind of scale are you talking about when you're talking about new things?
Yeah. And I'm not even entirely sure, to be honest with you, because, because that was so specific, so large and so specific. I had some questions about it. And then I just want to thank you. I don't want my questions to make you think that I didn't thoroughly appreciate this report. I do. I found it really interesting and very informative, and thank you.
And I know that we've had some developers that talked about sports complex, one on the Pullman-Moscow highway over the past, and then I know a current developer that has that also in his deep plans. One of the things that I've seen in other communities, and I've seen it in presentations at mayor's groups, where they have portable ice rinks, and they bring them in during the winter, and they just basically either lock off a parking lot or a street, and it's not that pricey, it's not in your $50 million category, but it certainly gives enough entertainment where people can come in and have some fun. And I've seen ice rinks, especially, work in this area around here, too. And we have a number of people who've migrated out from Canada. They are big in ice hockey, I can tell you that. Sometimes they have to go up to Spokane to do that, kind of. So as, and at one time, I can remember dealing with the WSU president, we actually had a particular portion of land that we could have put an ice rink there if we would have had the funding base for it. But has that ever come up in your discussion?
It has not. This is the first time we've, we've heard ice rink. But again, we've seen, you know, there's a lot of different groups that, especially, you know, when the, one of the blessings of the pandemic, the pandemic, so to speak, has been, you know, better utilization of the outdoor space during the winter months, is that, you know, kind of forced people to be outside. It didn't really force people. It, it really kind of embraced being outside, I guess is the better way to put that. So we've seen a number of recommendations that, you know, in different communities around the country. If you'd like to see some of those, we could probably take a look, because I think, you know, I do think that we're probably lacking, if I were going to say, if any of those recommendations, it's wintertime types of activities that aren't indoors, because I think you have a great trail system, you have better utilization of that. But again, trying to find something, you know, like that, I think that certainly is, there's certainly a number of examples that we can, that we can see.
Okay. Meg, good next, and then Eileen.
So real quick, first of all, thanks for reporting while you're not feeling well. I really enjoyed the report. Like Nathan has said, we're hearing this in a lot of different ways, some similar themes and ideas. That's, in my mind, telling us something that we need to act on some of these recommendations, because we've been hearing the same recommendations for a long time, and community is, is ready. But I just wanted not to go too much into the whole youth sports thing anymore, but I think you are on the right track, and I was glad to see that you put that in there. I am not a baseball fan. When I found out that we have this Palouse Summer Series, I, I didn't know what it was. You know, if it doesn't say baseball in it, I don't know what that is. So then, when I heard that it was as big as it is, and that these are folks that are staying in hotels and, you know, have their kids here, it's a captive audience, we need to leverage that as much as possible. So it doesn't necessarily translate into an actual building or stadium or a facility in my mind, but I think we need to do a better idea, better job of leveraging that. And then just real quick, I also appreciate the focus on branding and consistent branding, and that we need to partner with other tourism agencies to have a consistent look and feel, and not have all of these competing brands.
Eileen?
Yeah. And I think, Joe, thanks for the report. I wished we'd have been able to get you here, but, yeah, and I think to sort of help your process, maybe some of us who've been in the community a long time can help flesh out, you know, help you guys on, Disney on Ice used to open their season here every year in the Coliseum. The biggest shows on the planet used to play here. Emerson Lake and Palmer, ZZ Top, The Beach Boys, Stevie Wonder, Huey Lewis, Styx, Willie Nelson, Loretta Lynn, I mean, the list goes on and on. In fact, I started making a list the other day, I guess I should have brought it. So we need to sort of maybe do a little spelunking in our own history to, to help flesh out where your guys' heads might be in terms of some of those other events, and why we're no longer doing them.
Well, I mean, my, my honest feedback is, I think, you know, a lot of times, the way the music industry used to work, it was all just about geographic convenience. And don't get me wrong, I think geographic convenience still plays a significant role. But I, you know, the question that comes down to is, who's pitching Pullman as one of those destinations? And the answer's probably nobody right now, because that's not really what you've asked, you know, the Chamber to do, and there's nobody kind of organized to do that. And, you know, right now, you've got a really good partner in the Chamber who's promoting Pullman as a place, you know, for folks, you know, for photography, for a lot of the other things that we've, that we've recommended. But I think just thinking about that in terms of, and that's part of the recommendation with WSU and making better use of the Coliseum, is that that becomes more proactive, and that going out and asking for that. Because again, you know, geographic convenience used to rule all. There's only so many venues you could do that. And frankly, you guys probably compete more directly with Spokane, you know? And there is something to be said that where you could be partnering with Moscow and Lewiston and Clarkston and pitching kind of that Quad Cities to those potential musical acts, and to be able to play places like, you know, like Martin Stadium. You know, Martin Stadium is a good-sized stadium. I'm blanking on the capacity offhand. I want to, Mayor, you probably know the capacity of the stadium.
About 32,000, somewhere around there. So it varies.
I had 35 in my head for some reason, but I'm guessing that the voice of the Cougars probably knows better than I do. But, you know, 32,000 is, is a good-sized venue for an outdoor concert. I mean, that's, I think you could probably really attract folks if you were to do, you know, maybe four or five concerts a year in that type of venue. And you can get big name acts. I know that, I know that WSU has brought in, you know, folks like Elton John and Macklemore and other folks into, into the Beasley Coliseum for, for the big parent weekends. But, you know, certainly, those, those types of, you know, skills can be leveraged for summertime and to be able to use those, because it's, you know, WSU's a world-class organization. So I think, you know, maybe it's some sort of partnership with the, with the city and WSU to be able to kind of more proactively promote those things, Chambers included as part of that. But really, as the two major venue operators, WSU is, you know, probably one of the key partners we'll want to talk more about that with.
I know Leo Udi from Beasley Coliseum has been one of the big promoters on that one. But things have changed a little bit in Spokane with the arena and the different kinds of way they have competed now, too, and with Paul McCartney even coming up there for that. So we're going to go to Nathan, and then we'll conclude with Pat. So Nathan?
One last question from me is, as far as the international community, you know, Pullman, one of the unique things, and since you, I believe, have driven in here, one of the big things that the mayor had worked on was the project of all the different languages that we have coming in there. Is your, is the scope of your project, this project, does it look at the international community as well? I noticed it was US mainly, of course, but...
Well, that, the data sources, so first of all, you know, depending on the category. So there are youth sports that travel international lines, there are photographers that travel international lines. So concentrating more on those sectors, we think is probably a better bet. I can tell you, we don't have data from the Canadian communities, because just from a, from a data source standpoint, Canada has much different laws than we do in terms of how we can track that type of data. We've worked in cross-border stuff before, and I would tell you that there was probably some Canadian travel, but it wouldn't be as significant as, say, you know, Vancouver, Washington. So I think that there, there is that, that potential, but I think concentrating on those sectors, like the youth sports and the photography and those other areas, that, you know, in concerts, as an example, you're going to draw Canadians from that. It just may not necessarily be a direct market that you look to market to. We've also seen some changes in terms of cross-border travel over the last 10, 20 years. Again, being in Michigan, you know, we're very close to the Canadian border as well. You know, the changes alone in the last 20 years between being able to use your driver's license versus using a passport has significantly curtailed, you know, recreational travel between the, between the two countries.
Okay. We'll go to Ann, and then we'll go to Pat. Okay?
Thanks, Joe, for your great presentation. I hope you're feeling better soon.
Thank you. My apologies for all the coughing.
No, it's okay. Hey, as a fellow Michigander, when the mayor mentioned the Canadian hockey fans, should we talk about the Detroit Red Wings?
No, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna bring up the fact that Hockey Town is actually Detroit, but I, you know.
No, and I, I do love the idea about using, or hopefully using Beasley and Martin Stadium for larger, larger concerts. And as we were just speaking about, Spokane is a, as our probably major competitor in that area, Spokane also has a couple of smaller venues, the Bing and the Fox Theater, where, the Bing Crosby Theater, excuse me, and the, and the Fox Theater, where they bring in, I mean, my husband's going to see Bob Dylan on Friday night at the Bing. And so they bring in, I mean, I know he's older, but I mean, they bring in all sorts of acts up there. It doesn't have to be a big arena, is, so if we had smaller, you know, and we do, like our regional theaters and things like that.
And Spokane, to be honest, we, you know, you guys, again, have seen the working draft, which is probably the second version of the working draft. So the full version of working, the first version of the working draft actually listed the other neighboring communities as competitors. And as we talked about it more, you know, one of the things that we really realize is that it's, you know, and the word that we use, I think, in the version that you have right now is co-opetition. And so that they're competition, but they could also be cooperative. They could also be, you know, collaborators. And, you know, being able to work with a Spokane that has a much, much larger budget to be able to do tourism, might be an opportunity to do, you know, share acts. You know, if Dylan is going to be performing up there, you know, yeah, you know, what's the possibility of him coming to do a showdown in Pullman? You know, like, there, there could be synergy there based on, you know, the relative proximity. But the nice part is that you're close, but not close enough necessarily to be considered part of the exact same market.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Pat?
Joe, thank you so much. And certainly in light of how you're feeling, you have just really done a great job tonight with this presentation.
Thank you.
I know that you helped me see some things, and I'll call them like white noise, that you look at them so long and every day, that after a while, you just don't see them anymore. And the tour that we took of Pullman kind of opened my eyes to a lot of those kinds of things that we just need to be looking at differently. I think we have a number of opportunities. The city and the chamber certainly has an opportunity to partner, not just together, but with other groups as things come up. I'll even maybe call it like ad hoc partnership where...
Absolutely.
You know, as, on an individual basis, where, you know, I think that kind of makes some financial sense as well. And lastly, as I said, as I was, you know, talking about leading up to your presentation, I think most of the council will agree with me that you did not disappoint, and really, you know, opened our eyes to a lot of different and new opportunities that maybe we hadn't thought of before, and that certainly are, are worthwhile to, to pursue. And I know I, for one, will look forward to coming out and expanding on our branding activities, and then your final presentation at the end of, at the end of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
And get well. As we all know you will. Okay. All right. Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we now move to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Councils had a chance to look these over ahead of time. We even heard a presentation on one of these items that Joanna Bailey gave us. So with that, do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved?
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAlloon, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular minutes of the regular meeting of April 26, 2022, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant to the Washington State Golf Association in an amount up to $8,000 for the men's four-ball golf tournament. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 106643 through 106674 totaling $750,742.46. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 106675 through 106693. Electronic transfers 61, 62, 855 and 861 through 866. Payroll direct deposits numbered 76615 through 76970 totaling $1,349,273.77. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 106694 through 106809 totaling $392,011.89. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable electronic funds transfer numbered 4252022 totaling $62,869.52. And a motion to accept the funding from Sherrod Family Memorial Fund, Thomas C. and Winifred Neal Endowment, and Nona Rae Lynch Memorial Fund donations.
Any item the council would like offered for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through seven. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. Sam Jenkins, our GIS administrator, here to talk about our revising the boundaries of three council wards. So Sam?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this item, this ordinance would be the final step in the redistricting process, which we are required to do every 10 years after the federal census. Council will remember that in, at the end of March, we did a spring boarding session with our redistricting consultants, Flow Analytics. We looked at four different scenarios, potential scenarios, and discussed how they would, the strengths and weaknesses of those different redist, council ward redistricting scenarios. On April 12th, council selected three of those scenarios, the draft maps, and we published those in the paper. We offered them for comment on our city Pullman website via email, via phone, and residents were able to drop comments in person at City Hall, of course. On, where are we? April 26th, there was a public hearing, which people were able to make comments on those draft maps in person. And on April 26th, council approved redistricting scenario number four, which is now called the final, the final map, as the final map. Subsequently, that has been published in the paper. And again, that map has been available on our website and available for comment to the residents of Pullman. And the final stage then would be for council to approve an ordinance which would change, change city code to reflect the description of the, the final map that, that council has already approved. So that would be the ordinance that we've presented tonight, revising those boundaries. There are two additional changes that we're proposing to city code that would, the first one is simply a structural change that would break the description of the ward into three separate descriptions for ease of access, I guess, rather than one lengthy description which describes all three wards in one section. The second amendment to city code presented in this ordinance would clarify the process of updating wards in the instance that a piece of property is annexed into the city. Currently, city code prescribes that areas that are annexed into the city would become part of the ward to which they are adjacent. But city code does not prescribe what would happen in the event that an annexation that was adjacent to two council wards, where that would go. So the, the ordinance would propose that in that instance, the, the annexed area would go to the ward that had the least population. And we have our redistricting consultants on the call as well, and either Flo and Kent, or I would be happy to ask, answer any questions you might have about the proposed ordinance.
Well, since they're on the line right now, is there any comments they would like to make, too, to add on to what Sam has made a great presentation here so far? So we'll turn it over to you, if you want to have any comments.
No, I was just saying, we appreciate being here tonight, and it's been nice working with Sam on this project, and we feel like there's a nice proposal for you to act upon tonight.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Nathan?
So I think this is really well done. I did have a question. So there's an attachment, cites of potential ambiguity, which I'm sure is exactly what you're talking about. So with the two stars that we have here, one bordering on Ward 1, Ward 2, and then one on Ward 2, Ward 3. So scenario, which would those go into?
That would be dependent on the, the Census Bureau estimates of populations at the time, and, yeah, i- if that area, any of those areas were annexed, it would depend on the population estimates at the time.
Okay, yeah, and I saw the third star down there. Currently, what, what would you say? With, let's say, I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly the populations in each. So, and that's not really, that's not given here.
Yep. Currently, Ward 1 is the highest population.
Okay.
And so that would go to the non-Ward 1 ward. But, current city code doesn't specify, which is what we were trying to clarify, that in this hypothetical event, we would have an answer presented before us, rather than having to come back and ask council to make a determination.
Yeah. Sounds logical. Okay. Thank you.
Great. No other questions? Are there a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Moving second. Laura?
Ordinance number 22-12, an ordinance of the city of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, revising the boundaries of the three council wards of the city, rescinding and revoking Pullman City Code Section 1.76.030, amending Pullman City Code Section 1.76.040, adding Pullman City Code Sections 1.76.050, 1.76.060, and 1.176.070, rescinding and revoking ordinance numbers 11-11, Section 1, 2011, 02-3, Section 2, 2002, 95-14, Section 1, 1995, 92-2, Section 1, 1992, 86-19, Section 1, 1986, and A-974, Section 5, 1971, amending ordinance number A-974, Section 4, 1971, and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. With that, Sam, thank you for the lot of work on that.
Thank you.
I think all of us on the council and mayor, very grateful we have a GIS program.
Oh, yeah.
Finally. Yes. Next comes a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an execution of a universal transit access pass program between WSU, City of Pullman. With that, Wayne Thompson, our transit manager.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The resolution before you includes the long-awaited contract between WSU and Pullman Transit that completes the 2021-2022 school year. As a little bit of background, when the governor's COVID vaccine mandate was announced last fall, we found ourselves in the category of service providers to WSU. So the mandate applied to us as well. The city does not require COVID vaccines as a condition of employment, so our approach was to let that contract expire in the end of October. We have a fairly unique relationship with WSU Transportation Services, built on trust, longstanding, working together, quite a partnership. And because of that, we were able to just continue service with the understanding that they would cover missed contract payments retroactively, and also agree to finish the current school year with a new contract format. So we did negotiate a new format. This contract represents the same. It's calculated on the basis of eligible riders or issued Cougar cards. That's the fair medium for this contract. And the total revenue package is calculated to be what it would have been under the old contract format as well, with the current level of service. And we did end the year with slightly reduced service, so it's not the full value of a 2019 contract even, but it is calculated to match what it would have been in the old format. And you'll very likely see this format again in July or August, as we move into the 2022-2023 school year. In time, we would like to return to what we call the, the enhanced level of service contract format. That's what the 1990s WSU student transit fee was based on, and that gives WSU Transportation Services a little more of a spot at the table when it comes to talking about service levels, and of course, the associated fees with those. So fees based a little more on service than on eligible ridership. So at this point, we do have a funding solution in place to move forward, and I'm asking for your support by adopting this resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this item? And again, I want to commend transit and WSU. And Chris, you're here tonight. Thank you so much. And I know John Shaheen's been involved with that, but city administrator, our city attorney, all trying to work our way through governor's mandates and all that to make sure that students were served, faculty and staff as well. So really appreciate all the cooperation there. If there's no questions, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Muturap, Resolution R. 3322.
Second.
Moving second. Laura?
Resolution number R-33-22, a resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of a universal transit access pass program agreement between the city of Pullman and Washington State University.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, thank you very much, Wayne. We now move to the motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Whitman County District Court misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor prosecution. And again, our city administrator, Mike Urban, has been working with the county on this one, and we thank you for all your hard work on this particular project, and we appreciate, again, the partnership with the county. So with that, we go to Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I also want to express my appreciation to Jessica Genzma from the county for working with us. She's, she's been very, very busy doing a lot of different things, and as you can see by this contract, this is just something they're looking to tighten up their budget with. But before you tonight is the, a two-year agreement renewal, which is something that we weren't able to really hone in on the last time this came up. But by doing this, now it'll be concurrent with our budget, so that makes things a lot more predictable. So the item in front of you tonight is for 2324. The current agreement doesn't expire until the end of the year, but for budget purposes, Jessica and I both wanted to get a head start on this. Byno, budget, okay? And really, she gave us two options, and the, the good news, and this is where I really appreciate the thoughtfulness on the county's part, is if we would have taken the second year option last time at two and a half percent, that was an option they presented this time as well, that they'd keep the regular option at two and a half as they previously presented, and then the second year being a seven and a half percent kicker, or if it served our purpose better, doing 5% and 5% to meet their needs. Well, if you look at the two options, option one certainly is the better of the two financially at the end of the day. Saves $11,531 over the course of the two-year contract, and it also creates a lower starting base rate for any increases that go on past that. So based on these circumstances and the needs of the community, city staff is recommending the council allow the mayor to enter into a two-year agreement, specifically option number one is our recommendation for the 2324 year for all the items mayor mentioned in here, including district court, gross misdemeanor, and misdemeanor indigent defense. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none? Do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt option one, as presented by city administrator.
Second.
Moving second. Laura, do you want to read the full language on that one? So just make sure we have it in the record?
So it would be a motion to have the mayor execute attached agreement one with Whitman County for misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor prosecution, indigent defense, adjudication, and incarceration costs.
Right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
See how fast they are on that one?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.